Can you do it?
Yeah.
I'll be here.
All right, we're recording.
All right. We'll open up the agenda briefing. Call to order. And that invocation. Oh, I thought Mr. Commissioner Acoff's gonna do that since Mr. Foster's not here.
Um, Major Kate said that he was going to be here, so.
Okay, so he is gonna be here? He is gonna be here?
No, he is going to be here.
Okay, well, yeah. Plane will be back there, but he's not. Pleasure be allegiance, Commissioner. All right. Mr. Crumpfler, you ready to go?
Okay, well, we'll get to the good morning. Uh, we'll get to the approval of the minutes. We'll need a motion to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Uh, we got a discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Are there any add-ons?
Yes.
No add-ons at this point in time?
I might have one here, uh, Mr. Crumpfler. I've got a meeting Thursday at the jury thing to select jurors. And I've got two more other meetings. And I've got to select someone to take my place, and it needs to be board-approved. I just can't be there and at the city thing too also.
What meeting was that?
It's hard to go in and pick, you know, go through the books and pick the jury.
Right.
And they have to have three, and I cannot be there. So I've talked with them, and they're saying just somebody on the board would like to take my place. Can we do that all right, Mr. Parker? Yeah.
What, where would you like that placed?
Uh, it can be under consent agenda as far as I'm concerned. Could that be all right?
They were added as a number twenty-one under consent.
And, uh, Mr. Hardeston, Mr. Hardeston has said that he would do it for me.
Not that word.
And what meeting is this?
It's where you go into a room, and there's three people. And you go through all the jury names. And you look at all these books. And you pick somebody that might be deceased or can't serve. This is the group that picks who serves on the jury.
Oh, it is the group that serves on the jury?
Mm-hmm.
And a member of this board actually serves on that?
Hmm, I do. Been for years.
But you don't serve as a commissioner though, do you?
No, uh, no, not as a commissioner, no.
But this commissioner's appointing that position, right?
Yes, a judge appoints, the county appoints one, and, um, then somebody else, yeah.
I've just never heard of it.
Judge Glenn picks one, and, um, county picks one. Uh, yeah, just temporary, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker, what, what should we, um, name that item twenty-one?
Temporary.
Temporary appointment to the jury commission.
Thank you. That will be under consent. That would be Commissioner Freeman-Hardison.
Yeah, I got three meetings tomorrow, and I just can't get to them all.
Okay. All righty. Uh, moving on to special presentations. We have a presentation of a retirement plate to Brian Smith. I'm assuming the sheriff will be here for that.
Sheriff.
Okay. Jonathan Griffin will be here to present that. Number four is a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Farm City Week proclamation as presented by Cooperative Extension Agent Kevin Johnson. Number five is a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County as presented by Kristi Salz, Executive Director of Apprenticeships and Career Development at Wayne Community College. Number six is a night to shine presentation by Donna Countryman. And number seven is a Wayne Community College update by Dr. Patricia Pfeifer. And then we move on to unfinished business. It's a motion to approve the growing rural economics with access to technology, the Great Grand Agreement between the County of Wayne, the NC Department of Information Technology, and North State Communities Advanced Services with an appropriate budget amendment. Any questions on that one? Then we move on to our consent agenda. And we get to our late disabled veterans exemption applications. I think there are four of those. For consideration, they have all been vetted by the tax office and are appropriate to be approved. We also have our number ten, our late elderly or disabled exemptions. As well as our, um, as well as our late present use value applications. There being no questions on those. They were all being vetted by the tax office and appropriate to be approved. We'll move on to number twelve is our budget amendments.
Good morning.
We have quite a few today. We'll start with budget amendment number one forty-six. This is for the Social Services Department. This is to appropriate additional funds that they received, um, from ARPA. Uh, we're increasing this grant line for twenty-two thousand, six hundred and, um, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. This is for the low-income household water assistance program, and these are ARPA funds, like I said, and a hundred percent reimbursable. The next one is number one forty-eight. This one is for the Sheriff's Department. This is to appropriate one thousand, fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents for controlled substance. Number one fifty is for the Sheriff's Department. This is to appropriate five thousand, seventy-two dollars and twelve cents from insurance proceeds for damage to a vehicle. Number one fifty-one. This one is to appropriate funds to cover amendment number four with Fred Smith for the rear wall at the Goldsboro Business Campus for a hundred and nineteen thousand and ninety-five dollars. These funds are being pulled from WCDAs contingency line item.
And that's over and above what was originally budgeted, correct?
Correct.
What happened that we had to do this kind of budget amendment? I mean, is it one originally budgeted?
Uh, they didn't put enough money in that line item to complete the construction. They only put fifteen thousand. Because the actual design came up, had the specs were the design to be done once the work, once the soil testing was completed. And based on that, they came up with several designs, this being the less expensive of the designs that would work.
So the contingency fund was used. How much more was left in the contingency fund?
I could not tell you. But with this, uh, all of the water retention for those first lots.
Correct, yes, sir. All of the lot, first section plus one lot in phase two, with all the stormwater will be handled in this pond. It's a large pond.
So they don't want to have to worry about any, anybody developing. Which is a, which is a major thing for those industries that are going to be located in there. Because if you go out to Marquis, then you, they've got to actually.
Build something on.
Build their own water retention.
Correct. A beach lawn. Hopefully, this will be the finished section one phase.
Hopefully.
And we have some grant applications out there for phase twos to start development on me. Hopefully, that'll come through, but we'll see.
Okay, this budget amendment number one, please, before. This is to pay to appropriate half of the property taxes for the Northern Wayne Library building, and also to, uh, bill, uh, the town of Fremont for their half. So the total is six thousand, four fifty-one. The county will pay thirty-three, sixty-seven, um, and the municipality will pay three thousand, eighty-three dollars and five cents. So basically, that's a wash for us. Number one fifty-five. This is a combination of several things. This is for our jail project as well as our, um, social services project. This is to appropriate sixty-nine thousand to pay for an ECS contract for the jail and for the health department. We're needing to do a budget amendment for seventy thousand, six hundred. We also need to appropriate funds of ten thousand, eight sixty-five for the abatement of the Dakota and Fourth Street properties, as well as thirty-six thousand for the tree removal. So the total amount is one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars that is needed to be appropriated from fund balance for these projects. These were originally approved, but this budget amendment needed to come before the board for final approval.
Chip, did you, uh, speak to Kendall in regards to that tree removal?
The additional tree removal or this?
Yeah, this tree removal of thirty-six. When I, I called and asked him about it, he said, I'm not sure what that is.
Uh. The original tree removal.
I'm thinking it was the additional five acres over there we had removed originally.
Yeah.
It was not part of the construction project. It was outside of the construction. Well, and he said he thought that was what it was, but he says certainly we paid that by now.
No.
We had not.
No.
Well, I'm sure he's gonna be excited to get his check.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Budget amendment number one fifty-eight. This is to appropriate all of the grant revenues that are being used for the IV drive, both construction by S.T. Wooten. S.T. Wooten's contract was one point four five nine million dollars. The grants are three hundred thousand from Golden Leaf, four hundred thousand from DOT, and five hundred thousand from Department of Commerce. The Duke grant of fifty thousand dollars is being, um, held by WCDAs, and they're taking care of a lot of the upfront cost. So we use two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars of the contingency funds from WCDAs.
So it still costs us three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and we also have some additional soil testing that's been required, and we don't have a budget. We don't know the dollar amount of undercut that's gonna be required there.
So it's an addition. The original cost is about?
We don't know yet.
Don't know yet. Two million dollars?
Oh, yeah. Probably getting close to it.
How much was budgeted for the red?
I can't remember the original amount.
Well, it's been, it's been. It's been around about four times between the state doing something, the city not doing something, and, you know, it's one thing after another.
We've had, uh, to build it to DOT specifications. Then because we didn't have sewer and water installed at the time of construction, we were having to put casings under the intersections. That added cost. Now, once the contractor was on site, you have to have soil testing being done once the topsoil's removed. And they're saying that's gonna need undercut. But that soil report has not been turned back. I'm sure it's gonna need undercut there.
Budget amendment number one sixty-two is for the health department. This is a grant of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars that we have received from the state. This is, um, for the local workforce development. And these funds will be used to retain public health staff, expand recruiting efforts, supporting and sustaining public health staff, and training for new and existing staff.
Interesting, see if this works.
Budget amendment number one sixty-three. This is from facilities. This is to, um, re, or capitalize, to realign funds to capitalize a condensing unit in the Wenders Detention Center. It was budgeted for, we just needed to move funds to the appropriate line item so it could be capitalized. Budget amendment one sixty-nine. And I'm gonna say one, one seventy.
Can I, can I go back to that right there? That, um, can you read that memorandum? On the, uh, the last budget amendment out loud?
Which one? What number?
One sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight, or I'll read it. Or one sixty-three. Is that right? To realign funds to cover purchase of a new condensing unit at the Wenders Detention Center. There was a bad compressor, and it was cheaper to replace the outside unit versus the two bad compressors. So that tells you that our, uh, facilities director is, and his staff is looking at stuff instead of just replacing parts. They're looking at what's best for all involved. So just wanna do a little shout-out to them. Thank you.
Budget amendments number one sixty-nine, one seventy, one seventy-one, and also one seventy-three. They can all be grouped together. They have the same purpose. Basically, all of these salaries and fringes were budgeted in one line item. And when the, um, time equivalency for the health department was keyed into their system where they get their reimbursements from, it would be split out at that time. So what we're doing, we're actually splitting it out into our accounting system so it would be a whole lot easier to process and match up, uh, our reports. The funds are already budgeted, we're just realigning them all. Budget amendment number one seventy-seven. That's for the health department as well. This is to appropriate, uh, additional funds that we have received from the COVID-nineteen School Health Team Workforce Program of twenty-four thousand and thirty-six dollars. Budget amendment number one seventy-nine. EMS received a grant from, uh, for, to purchase ambulances of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's the HERSA grant.
Like I say, uh, that was a grant that Adam Caldwell helped us apply for through Senator Tillis's office, and that was very nice for us to get that.
That's a big thank you from us.
Correct.
That's a big one.
Has, have they already arrived?
No, it'll be like twenty twenty-six.
Well, I didn't think they had, how long this was.
Twenty twenty-six is what he told me.
Twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this include all the stuff that goes inside of it too?
It's complete.
Okay. Well, this is fantastic.
But you gotta wait three years to get this.
Yeah.
So that's the reason that we got to plan ahead and keep our stuff flowing. Because if we don't, we're gonna get behind again.
Not only with ambulance, but the whole fleet. I mean, with the whole fleet. We have a lot of several ordered other than these that are still waiting.
Budget amendment number one eighty-two is to appropriate grant funds received for the jet port. This is a hundred percent funded by, um, state grant funds, Department of Environmental Quality, and Division of Water Infrastructure for our, uh, pump station improvements. Number one eighty-three is just to appropriate donations that we, excuse me, not donations. This is JCPC funds that need to be returned to the state that were not spent of six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Why didn't we spend it all?
It is a pass-through grant, so I cannot, um, give you an answer on that one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Angie. Well, you gotta look at it like this right here, though. You know, you can save what you spend it all, or on the other hand, you can save if there was anything that he needed. You know, he saved money, so. So shout-out to Justin, yes. Uh, moving along to number thirteen. If there's no other questions on budget amendments, we'll, we've got a motion to some health department policies for animal bite immunization fund, patient fees, eligibility, and bad debt application, tattoo clinic administration fees as recommended by the DHHS Advisory Board.
I got a question on that.
Okay.
We're talking about it on the, uh.
Lost my place.
On the tattoo policy. We're talking about going to two fifty.
Correct.
Instead of a hundred for a temporary.
Okay, got it.
So how do we, so we, how do we, um, address that?
You wanna remove it from new, uh, consent, put it under new business, so they can make a motion to change the amount or?
I think you can just leave it on consent.
And just change the amount.
And just change the amount now. They'll all agree to it, I guess. Yeah, uh, I would hope that we would all agree that we're gonna increase that fee from seventy-five dollars to two hundred and fifty, and that would be the only amendment to any of these policies. So I'm, I'm in agreement that we increase it to two fifty.
Do we take a vote on that? Do we take a vote on that?
Um, actually, yes. If you want to amend what's on the consent agenda, um, you would need to vote. But you would all, they would need to vote during the regular session, correct? Um, during the adjustment of the agenda, state that they want to amend number thirteen, um, to change the fee from seventy-five to two fifty during the adjustment of the agenda versus now during the briefing.
Right. So we, do we vote now or not vote now?
No, you don't vote now.
Okay.
Tell you what I'll do. When we discuss the adjustment of the agenda, I'll mention it, and then you can vote on it as an adjustment.
Got it.
There you go.
Thank you. All righty. And then, uh, number fourteen is a motion to approve the final plat for Aaron's Place, Section Six. Wait a minute, was there any other questions on thirteen? Okay, Aaron's Place, Barry, thank you.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
And, uh, we do have Aaron's Place subdivision. This is a final plat for Section Six. So the final plat, of course, this is the end of the process, um, that subdivision goes through. Uh, and this is the last phase of Aaron's Place, so this will finish up that subdivision. Um, it is actually out, um, you go out seventy towards Rosewood, um, turn right on Leslie Road, just past Casey's Nursery. It'll be back there, kinda dead ends, uh, back there towards seventy bypass. Uh, there are nineteen lots proposed. Uh, the average lot size is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy square feet. All the improvements are in, um, the street is built, and we do have a built-to-sanders letter from DOT. And the planning board has reviewed this and recommends approval.
I rode back in there the other day, and there's, there's some pretty expensive houses back there.
There are, yep. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Barry. Uh, moving on to fifteen is establish a public hearing on December the fifth, twenty twenty-three during the nine AM meeting to receive public comments on a request to rezone nineteen acres from RA twenty to R-ten for property located off of US seventy west, identify as tax parcel two six seven one nine zero four three five eight. And that's Barry again.
Yeah, with this request, we're actually just asking that you hold a public hearing, um, next month so that we can advertise for this. But it is, uh, around eighteen acres or so. Uh, it's actually, if you're familiar with Goshen Medical Center out there at Rosewood, um, Adair Place is kinda back behind there. Um, it ties into that development. Uh, you did have a subdivision on that tract that was proposed, uh, a couple of times that you've seen called Preston Wood. Uh, and so it's that property that they're requesting to rezone to R-ten. And so it's that property that they're requesting to rezone to R10. And so with this request right now, we're just asking that you allow us to hold a public hearing next month, and during this month, we'll advertise it, post a sign on the properties, and notify adjacent property owners so that they can speak at that public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All righty. Moving on to number 16 is a motion to approve the proposed 2024 Wayne County Holiday Schedule. That was attached in your agenda. Any questions on that? Moving on is a motion to approve the Wayne Action Group for Economic Solvency, Wages Community Services Block Grant, CSBG application. This is something we do every year for wages. It's a pass-through to wages. Number 18 is a motion to approve the petition to add Shamrock Road in Shamrock Court in Pillacre, Section 4, to the state maintenance system. That's attached in your agenda with the maps and the petition from the landowners to add that to the state maintenance system.
How old is, how old is that subdivision?
It was built in 1987.
Eighty-seven.
I looked that up yesterday. Number 19 is a motion to remove Lot 9 of Park East from the Wayne County Industrial and Business Park Protective Covenants. What do you want to speak on that?
This was one that I've been told that we, hope we've got somebody that wants to come develop that and taking off all the restrictions so they can build what they need.
Any questions on that?
We've done it in the past.
We've done it in the past for several other industries as they occur. Number 20 is a motion to award the Sheriff Command Shelter Addition to Jackson Builders of Goldsboro, the lowest responsive responsible bidder, an appropriate budget amendment. That was something I brought before the board at a previous meeting. The board asked me to go back out and try to sew contract it and look at if we could save some money. We looked at it and we could not do any better, so I'm back before you asking for that to be approved so we can move forward. Um, any questions on that one?
Watch the figures.
Ah, hang tight, I can get them for you.
Okay, I found it.
It was, we're going to go with option one, which was $285,236.
Okay.
Which was the lowest price. Let's see here. Okay, and then we added a 21, which would be the temporary appointment to the jury commission, and Commissioner Freeman-Hardison has agreed to take that position for the next meeting. That was number 21. Then we move on to new business, and that is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Hudson Village. And that's back to Barry.
This plat we do have on new business instead of consent because this one does have, I guess, a decision that needs to be made by the board in terms of two plats that you have. But I've got to do it really quickly. Basically, it is a preliminary plat, so this is the start of a, the process for subdivision. This subdivision is proposed on South Bestin Road, right between Ellington subdivision and Willow Pond subdivision, and there are 77 lots that are proposed. You do have two plats that I've referenced in your packet. The first is the original plat that went to the planning board. It does show connections into Willow Pond, which is to the south, and a connection into Ellington to the north, where they connect those stub outs into those subdivisions. That was the original that went to planning board and was reviewed, and they recommended approval. They did later, the board later asked that the subdivision be brought back because they did, ended up with concerns after the fact with the connections and the fact that the neighboring streets and the other subdivisions were not state maintained. So the second plat is the revision that was brought back that the planning board recommended that removes those stub out connections. And so now you see cul-de-sacs and subdivision in the middle, which is this one, no longer connects to the one on the north and the one on the south. And so basically, the ordinance does require interconnection, so any deviance from that or deviation from that requires a variance, so that's why it's on your, as a new business item. And so to approve the second plat is basically would require variance because the ordinance does require interconnection. I have received comments, and I've included that in your packet as well, from the Wayne County Fire Marshal, who does recommend the interconnection so that public safety agencies will have multiple entrances and that residents will have multiple ways out in the event that an access is blocked. So you do have that in your packet as well from the Wayne County Fire Marshal. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Again, this is on your agenda as new business for discussion because a decision does need to be made in terms of which direction, since the planning board recommendation will require variance, the board needs to decide whether to do that or go with the original, which the ordinance requires in terms of connecting in to those neighboring subdivisions.
Is that by the Willow Pond, that connection you're talking about, that little road there?
Yeah, it's a...
Can you put that up on the screen?
That one.
That one and this one. The connected plat.
The original.
That's the same, it's two, it's two connections. The thing about it is, is that little section that's going into Ellington, with the, if he doesn't connect it, it's not going to be taken over, but they do it anyway, right?
Right. Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Here's my concern. The developer paid for having this design, presented it to our planning department, which in fact had the connections...
The planning board.
The planning board. That had the connections to the adjoining subdivision, so there's interconnectivity as required by our ordinance. So the developer did everything that we asked him to do. After the approval, it was changed and came back before the planning board, and they approved it where it was not connecting. I've reached out to the developer and asked him, why would there be any objections? Because he wants to go to the one that does not have the connections. And the controversy is a statement by the DOT that this road that connects into Willow Pond...
Which one? Did you want the revised or the original?
That one.
That's the original, right there.
Do you want me to zoom in on a certain area?
Right in the middle, if you will.
Right in the middle, you'll see a road that connects from his subdivision into Willow Pond.
Right there.
And there's a, there's a street there that's stubbed out, and NC DOT has made a, an opinion that when this road that's in the new subdivision is, has to be...
It's actually this one he's worried about. This was the Brandy subdivision. Isn't Willow Pond the newer subdivision?
No, he's, no, no, no. Willow Pond's there.
I know that, but Willow Pond is the newer subdivision of what this is.
I understand, but it's this one right here that they, that NC DOT has stated that that road that's stubbed out in Willow Pond outside of his subdivision will have to be, meet NC DOT standards for his road to be taken over by the state. And Barry, I think you've seen that email.
Right.
And this is the first time this has ever come up, and the developer is stating, why should I be responsible to upgrade a street outside of my subdivision for my street to be taken over by NC DOT? So there's a controversy here. You know, the developer should not carry the burden of repairing and upfitting streets outside of his subdivision, which are not his streets. He didn't build that street. So there's a problem here, and I would ask that, so our future developers understand that they would not be responsible, that we get a definite ruling from legal at NC DOT that we don't require our developers to spend money outside of their subdivision to bring other streets up to NC DOT specifications. That's where the controversy is. So the developer wants to have interconnectivity, but he doesn't want to be responsible for upfitting streets outside of his purview. Does that all make sense?
Yes.
So could we reach out and get a definite ruling that our developers would not be responsible for upfitting streets outside of their subdivisions that they have control over?
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to DOT again.
We need to get that, we really do. And if you don't get an answer from this level, then go to the next level and the next level. And if we got to get our legislators involved, then we need to get our legislators involved. But we have to have definite ruling there so that our developers know what their responsible responsibilities are. It's just not fair to the developers.
I agree with what you're saying, but are we going to put this, are we going to put this off then?
No, I, I think we need to go ahead and approve it, and let's move forward, but we do need to work and resolve this issue.
Well, like I told y'all earlier, I was on the planning board when, many, many years ago, when Chip and Connie, when this issue come up, there were subdivisions being built with dead end streets, and the call volume for EMS and fire had increased, and they were having issues with dead end streets. They could get in, but then no way out. So that's when the cul-de-sacs were put into our plans and the stub outs. And it was all for public safety. We understand that there was an extra expense. I developed two subdivisions and I had to go by the rules, and I faced the correct chip. It's all about public safety. Like, on this particular subdivision right here, all right, you turn in on that street and that second, third, or fourth house is on fire, well, the fire truck is going to have a road blocked. All right, you get on a little bit further down, you got an elderly couple or anybody far as that goes, sees the commotion, and one of them has a heart attack. How are you going to get an EMS truck in there to them? It's all about public safety. You know, we, we're not trying to put extra burden on the developers, but you know, public, with me, public safety comes first.
Well, not to mention that, is you got, the buses can actually get in and out through the subdivisions now, so the children have to walk through the western road. So what we're talking about doing is approving the interconnectivity plat and going to DOT and asking for clarification. I mean, it's not fair for any developer to have to keep up somebody else's roads just because...
That's never been the rule historically in the past in 25 years that I've been here. I totally agree, it hadn't been, but it...
And I can, I can show you at least two places just coming to mind right now that this, this DOT maintained to afford stops, so.
And then picks up the same street further down.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just saying, this, this developer understands the connectivity, and he wants to do that, but he doesn't want the responsibility in the future to upfit other people's streets.
But I understand that.
So hopefully, we can get some clarification from legal so that they are not going to enforce that going forward.
So I will say this right here. To keep this from happening again, what is the, if the planning board, and this is, I'm not putting you on the spot, this is the thing for Chip and you answer, I guess. When the planning board makes a decision on something, that they bring it back to them and make, and change the decision after the fact, before it comes to us, is that the way it's supposed to work, or is it they just make a decision, it comes to us, and we make the decision, yeah, you're right?
You make a decision, it goes to you regardless of whether it's a recommendation for approval or denial, it still goes to you.
Okay. Before it goes back, what I'm saying...
First is what's got to come to us.
Yes, sir.
And what I'm saying is, that being the case, the developer has incurred cost based on...
Correct.
Flip-flopping. This ain't got nothing to do with you, Barry. Or flip-flop. So that's a problem.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's, make sure I understand the way it works. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this, but that's what I was elected for. I've got a problem with a planning board member and certain his personal feelings on an issue like this. They were appointed to do, to go by the guidelines and rules of Wayne County and the general statutes, and I've served on several boards, and I have had to vote for things or against things that I really didn't approve, but it was for the best for the county and the citizens of Wayne County. And I just, I got a, I got an issue with a planning board member and certain his personal feelings.
And is there any reason why we can't change, flip this over to consent agenda?
There's not. You can, if you want me to make that recommendation, I can do that.
Yeah, we, are we in agreement that we change this over to consent agenda of approving the first plat, which has interconnectivity?
You got a problem with that?
Me neither.
Great. Can we do that, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that will be 22. Well, we've all already had our say, so let's not rehash it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's going to be number 22. Yes, sir. Then we'll move on to the recess, the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, where you, number 23, you would establish a Board of Adjustment Public Hearing on December the 5th, 2023 during the 9:00 AM meeting to receive public comment on the special use permit for Piney Grove Solar Energy Facility. And then 24, you were, a motion to establish a Board of Adjustment Public Hearing on December the 5th, 2023 during the 9:00 AM meeting to receive public comment on the special use permit for Turtle Co. Solar Energy Facility. Then recess the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting, where we have public comment section with a speaker time limit of four minutes. Then we have a county managers report, and then a Board of Commissioners committee reports. And then we will go into closed session. Do we have closed session? I don't think we have any closed session for today. And then we'll recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, where we will reconvene our board meeting at 12 o'clock for our inter-local government meeting at the Maxwell Center for lunch with our towns, and then we'll adjourn from the Maxwell Center. Madam Chair, can we go into closed session to discuss a matter with our attorney? I saw booed that we go into closed session.
I shouldn't go closed session. All present?
Okay.
It's like, I don't know.
Anybody need to rest?
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Good seeing smiling faces this morning. Uh, we're going to have invocation by Commissioner Foster.
Everyone by the head. Well, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for waking us up this morning. I have to ask you for thankness for allowing this board to have the willingness to come here and do what's best for the citizens of Wayne County. We ask you to continue to bless this county, this board, school board, city council, everyone who's involved in making decisions on the betterment of, of this county and our nation. We thank you. All things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have approval of the minutes from your October 17th, 2023 meeting.
I move approval.
Have a motion on the floor to approve minutes, October 17th. Thank you.
Okay. Something's going on with my system.
You got to join, hit the...
You got to go back, go back. Yeah, I, I did join the...
Hit the green button.
It's no, it's saying leave the meeting, I'm already joined. Yeah, so something's going on, but I vote to...
There we go. Seven oh. All righty, thank you for that. When discussion and adjustment of the agenda, I've got a couple items to switch around here. Add, um, under consent, under number 13, a motion to approve the health department policies animal by immunization fund, patient fees, eligibility and bad debt application, tattoo clinic administration fees as recommended by the DHHS board. The tattoo clinic fees are recommended to go from $75 to $250. So, change that. And then we would add another item, number 21, which would be a temporary appointment to the jury commission, uh, and, uh, chair, chairman, I mean, Commissioner Freeman Hardison has agreed to attend that meeting for the next meeting and then Chairwoman Barbara Acock will resume her attendance at that. And then we've got a new number, uh, 21, or actually 22, would be a move from new business motion to approve preliminary plat for Hudson Village, move it under the consent to 22. And that would be with the plat, with the interconnectivity. And let's see, I think that is it. That is it, Madam Chair. We'd need approval of those few minor changes.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the changes on the consent agenda. All right, we have a motion.
Mine's not coming up. Mine's not coming up on my screen.
Mine's coming up. Mine came up, you gotta probably clock back, gotta log back out like I do.
All righty, thank you for that adjustment and we'll move on to special presentations where we have a presentation of retirement plaque to Brian Smith and I think Jonathan Griffin is going to present that.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sheriff Pierce couldn't be here this morning. He is away at the North Carolina Sheriff's Conference, so he could ask for me to come and stand in for him. I'm Major Griffin. Let Brian to step forward. Brian's been with us for many years, he's been with the county for over 28 years in the EMS department as well as at Goldsboro, City of Goldsboro. So, he's got many years in the first responder service. But this is presented to Brian Smith in recognition and appreciation of your many years of faithful, dedicated service, June 2002 to October 2023 by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Brian, I didn't know you were old enough to retire.
No, I started young. They seen me around for many years.
It's been a long, long time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Congratulations. All righty, moving on to number four is a motion to approve the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation as presented by Cooperative Extension Agent Kevin Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin.
Uh, so I want to read the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation to you. Whereas the growth and development of the county and the well-being of all its citizens are dependent upon the cooperation and exchange between the two essential environments of our society, farm and non-farm families. And whereas studies have shown agriculture and ag business industries together bring in over $1 billion to the economy of the county, which represents 21% of the county's income and 20% of the county's employment. Whereas Wayne County's farm income indicates a significant contribution to the economy of our county with over $450 million in gross farm gate sales last year. Whereas Wayne County is home to Mount Olive Pickle, the largest pickle company in the United States, and home to Goldsboro Millen Company, parent company of Butterball Turkey, the largest producer of turkey products in the United States. Whereas whether we live on the farm or in the city, we share common needs, food for our nourishment, forestry products for our shelter and paper and fiber for clothing and other materials. And whereas if Wayne County is to continue to prosper, it is important that farm and non-farm residents appreciate and understand each other.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good seeing smiling faces this morning. We're going to have invocation by Commissioner Foster.
Everyone by the head. Well, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for waking us up this morning. I have to ask you for thankness for allowing this board to have the willingness to come here and do what's best for the citizens of Wayne County. We ask you to continue to bless this county, this board, school board, city council, everyone who's involved in making decisions on the betterment of this county and our nation. We thank you. All things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have approval of the minutes from your October 17th, 2023 meeting?
A motion on the floor to approve minutes.
October 17th. Thank you.
Something's going on with my system.
You got to join.
You gotta go back.
Go back.
Yeah, I did join.
Hit the green button.
Yeah. It's no, it's saying leave the meeting. I'm already joined.
Oh.
Yeah, so something's going on, but I vote to.
There we go. Seven oh. Alrighty, thank you for that. When discussion and adjustment of the agenda, I've got a couple items to switch around here. Add, um, under consent, under number 13, a motion to approve the health department policies animal by immunization fund, patient fees, eligibility and bad debt application, tattoo clinic administration fees as recommended by the DHHS board. The tattoo clinic fees are recommended to go from $75 to $250. So change that. And then we would add an item number 21, which would be a temporary appointment to the jury commission. Uh, and Chair Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Freeman-Hardison has agreed to attend that meeting for the next meeting. And then Chairwoman Barbara Acock will resume her attendance at that. And then we've got a new number, uh, 21, or actually 22 would be a move from new business motion to approve preliminary platform Hudson Village move it under the consent to 22. And that would be with the plat- with the interconnectivity. And let's see. I think that is it. That is it, Madam Chair. We'd need approval of those few minor changes.
You have a motion on the floor to approve the changes on the consent agenda?
Come on.
All right, we have a motion.
Mine's not coming up on my screen.
None of them's coming up on the screen.
Mine came up. You gotta probably clock back, gotta log back out like I do.
Alrighty, thank you for that adjustment. And we'll move on to special presentations, where we have a presentation of retirement plaque to Brian Smith. And I think Jonathan Griffin is going to present that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff Pierce couldn't be here this morning. Um, he is away at the North Carolina Sheriff's Conference, so he could ask for me to come and stand in for him. I'm Major Griffin. Let Brian to step forward. Brian's been with us for many years. He's been with the county for over 28 years in EMS Department as well as at Goldsboro, City of Goldsboro. So he's got many years in the first responder service. But this is presented to Brian Smith in recognition and appreciation of your many years of faithful dedicated service, June 2002 to October 2023 by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Brian, I didn't know you were old enough to retire.
No, I started young. They've seen me around for many years.
It's been a long, long time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Congratulations. Alrighty, moving on to number four is a motion to approve the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation as presented by Cooperative Extension Agent Kevin Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin.
So I want to read the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation to you. Whereas the growth and development of the county and the well-being of all its citizens are dependent upon the cooperation and exchange between the two essential environments of our society, farm and non-farm families. And whereas studies have shown agriculture and ag business industries together bring in over $1 billion to the economy of the county, which represents 21% of the county's income and 20% of the county's employment. Whereas Wayne County's farm income indicates a significant contribution to the economy of our county with over $450 million in gross farm gate sales last year. Whereas Wayne County is home to Mount Olive Pickle, the largest pickle company in the United States, and home to Goldsboro Milling Company, parent company of Butterball Turkey, the largest producer of turkey products in the United States. Whereas whether we live on the farm or in the city, we share common needs, food for our nourishment, forestry products for our shelter, and paper and fiber for clothing and other materials. And whereas if Wayne County is to continue to prosper, it is important that farm and non-farm residents appreciate and understand each other. Whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now for there be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 15th through the 22nd, 2023 to be Farm City Week and a week of thankfulness, adopted this seventh day of November, 2023. And with that said, do you're all invited. Hope you can attend our Farm City Week banquet, which will be Monday, November 20th at 6 o'clock. Uh, it's always a special time. Our speaker this year will be a young lady from the poultry science department to kind of give us the impacts of what turkeys and broilers bring to our county. And I know there's always concerns about avian flu. Uh, and also, that's of course the time we induct two individuals into the Agriculture Hall of Fame, and that's always a special moment. So with that said, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing y'all on November 20th.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
One question. How did those flowers go the other night that you won?
Oh, they're great. They were, they were great. They were great at the farm, at the farm committee. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation.
Got a motion on the floor to approve the 2023 Farm City Week proclamation?
Alrighty, thank you for that vote. Thank you, Kevin, for that presentation. Uh, moving on to number five, we'll approve the 2023 National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County as presented by Kristi Salz, Executive Director of Apprenticeships and Career Development at Wayne Community College.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That's a long title.
It is. We need an acronym. We keep trying to come up with a good one. Good morning. It is my pleasure to present to you this morning the proclamation for the National Apprenticeship Week of 2023. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its ninth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers here in Wayne County and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas Wayne County recognizes the vital role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And whereas Wayne County recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model is a key strategy to improving job quality and creating access to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all, starting with youth and young adults, while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioner does hereby declare November 13th, 2023 through November 19th, 2023 as National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County. This the seventh day of November, 2023. And just to give you some updates of our apprenticeship program at Wayne Community College, we actually began our journey in apprenticeships about six years ago through our Business and Industry Center that has now evolved into a, almost a center of itself, obviously stated by my title. But we currently serve over 100 apprentices here in Wayne County and the surrounding region. Um, we have grown from one occupation code to over eight occupation codes and over 20 employer partners that are now part of us. Um, Wayne County actually has an apprenticeship program itself, the County of Wayne. Um, you have a student who's in our industrial maintenance program. Um, I believe slated to graduate in 2024, December of 2024. But we're doing great things here in the county. Um, our program actually started out on our curriculum side of the house, but now it has also evolved into our short-term training through an electrical and HVAC program as well. And we're adding to that occupation code almost monthly, it seems like. So I'm very grateful for what Wayne County has done to support our apprenticeship program and continues to do to support it as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I make a motion we approve the resolution.
Got a motion on the floor to approve the resolution for Apprenticeship Week. Kristi, you've done a great job at the Seymour Johnson meeting we had last week. You really did, and thank you for that. And I got a question for Dr. Pfeiffer. How did you get up that high on that steel bar to sign your name?
Actually, it's sitting on a table right there. We're talking about.
I seen that. It was very impressive, putting your name on it. Thank you.
We need a motion to vote on that.
Yeah, we think.
Need to vote. Y'all already voted? Okay. Alrighty, moving. Thank you for that presentation, Salz. Uh, next, moving on to number six is a Night to Shine presentation by Donna Countryman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, thank you for having us. And all my fellow commissioners, thank you so much. Um, they're going to be showing a video as I speak. I am Donna Countryman. I am the Night to Shine chairperson here in Goldsboro, Wayne County. Um, it is sponsored by the Tim Tebow Foundation, but it's hosted by the First Baptist Church. There has to be a church behind it because it's centered around God's love. So I just wanted to make everyone aware, we are back in person. We were this past year, and this video shows some of our sites, of our fellow honored guests throughout the evening. It was a wonderful event. Um, Tim Tebow, as you know, has done a really great job. This is, this will be his 10th anniversary in 2024. It is our fifth year of doing Night to Shine here in Goldsboro. And, um, we want to make sure it continues. And it is not a First Baptist Church event. It is a Tim Tebow-sponsored event. And we want to make sure that everyone in Goldsboro and Wayne County know about it. And we want to, um, you know, increase our numbers. This year, we had 180 registered guests. We had over 250 volunteers. We had Southern Wayne and Eastern Wayne ROTC volunteer. I think I had about 40 ROTC cadets that evening. Um, and they were wonderful. They used, they had a saber team. The honored guests were able to walk the red carpet under the sabers. They had a limousine ride. They had their hair done, their nails done. Um, we just wanted to make it an unforgettable night for our special need individuals. As a matter of fact, if you saw the first scene, I believe Mr. Gurley's granddaughter?
Daughter.
Daughter, excuse me.
I voted to be her granddad.
I don't mean to make you any older. Was?
He's already got a paperwork ready.
Oh, I'm sure he does. He, she was a buddy to one of our honored guests. Um, and of course, Ryan just loves her to death. And he thinks of the world of, of the Gurleys and of her. So I just want to encourage anyone who would like to volunteer. I have something for you at the end. At the, in the springtime, as Tim Tebow came to Mount Olive to speak at the graduation, my daughter and I had the opportunity to meet him in person. Took some finagling, but we did. Um, met him at the hotel, and what honored it was to meet him and a humble young man he is. He was so excited about hearing about our Night to Shine that, you know, he just, he just centered on what can we do to help you make it bigger, how better? Um, and I was just thrilled, and I just wanted to tell him, thank you. Thank you for this mission. Thank you for this vision you have for special need individuals. It is a joy to see these individuals come out and dance and be with their friends and dress up and just feel special that evening. My goal today is to make sure that everyone knows about it. And I want to encourage, if you would please, to encourage our public to be a part of this. Uh, it is a special night. And when you see at the end, everyone is crowned king and queen of the prom. And it's so special to see either a buddy or a family member, a brother, a sister, to put a crown on their loved ones or their friends. And it just brings chills every time I hear it and I see it. Um, so we want to make sure that we do that because in God's eyes, they're all kings and queens. Any questions? I have two more things and I'll scoot out. We do have some fundraisers. As you know, it does funds to do this. We held it at the Maxwell Center. Um, on November the 19th, we're having a quarter auction called Battle of the Paddles. If you've ever been to one, it is a lot of fun. Um, you'll be able to find some wonderful gifts for Christmas. Um, we invite you to come. It is 2:00 to 6:00 at the Fellowship Hall of First Baptist Church. Um, it's a Sunday afternoon, so just, you know, go get your lunch after you go to church and then come by and see us. Also, in January, we're going to have a dinner and variety show. We have some wonderful talent here in this, in the city, in this county. Um, and we had this one last year, and it was a big success. We also have some honored guests. Um, one of our honored guests, Ryan, is a ventriloquist. And we have someone singing, and we have another honored guest is dancing. So I invite you to come to that as well, if you can. Um, and just so you don't have any reason not to know about it, we have gone online this year. All of our registrations are online. And I want to present, if I could, to the commissioners, um, a way that you can volunteer if you like, or if you know someone who is a special need individual and not attending, to be a part of it. You can go online and scan the QR code and volunteer. Um, and if you know a special need, they can do that as well. It comes directly to me, and we just sign you up. And then if you're a volunteer, you get a little bit of training and have a great time that night. I can't emphasize, you will get more out of this night than you think you, than you put into it. And thank you so very much for allowing me to present this.
Ms. Countryman?
Yes, sir.
I kind of missed the date. You said, you said November 19th is the fundraiser, and where is that going to be at?
It's going to be at First Baptist Church downtown on John Street in the Fellowship Hall. Okay, and January 19th will be the dinner and variety show.
Well, I want to thank you. It looks like I missed the party. Look like they, they were doing it up.
They were.
Having a great time.
Yes, they had a terrific time. And it's just awesome to see everyone have such a good time and feel safe in the environment that they're in. Um, we did have some firemen there. Um, our fire chief was there, dressed in uniform, had their pictures taken with the fire chief. Uh, our mayor was there that evening along with some of the council people. And, um, Brandy Matthews, one of our councilwomen, was dancing away that night. And she had a great time. So I invite you to come. It's a wonderful event. Um, we hope to make it better every year and, and continue it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's well worth the trip, I can promise you. Just to see how, what fun they have.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Thank you, everyone.
Miss, do you have a way, I don't see anything, just a way to just, just simply donate without? Because you said about the auction and everything. I don't see.
There's a couple of ways. Um, you can send a donation to First Baptist Church Goldsboro and make it out to, you know, make it out to First Baptist Church, but in the memo section, put Night to Shine. You can do it online as well. There is an online giving on the, on our church website. It's, I believe it's www.fbcgoal.org, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay. My contact information's on the card. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'd love to talk to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tell Ryan I wore his Clemson coat today because I thought he was coming.
If he could find some pants to match that, I'm sure.
He said he was going to come, so I wore, I wore his Clemson coat just right.
He's a triff. He's a tris. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Moving on to number seven is our presentation from update on Wayne Community College by Dr. Patty Pfeifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, Carol's going to pull up a PowerPoint. I appreciate the opportunity to come here a couple of times a year to update the community, the commissioners, obviously the staff, county managers on what's happening at Wayne Community College. Forgive me, I've got a little bit of a scratchy throat. But today, just a few updates for you. Um, at Wayne Community College, we have measures called performance measures that all 58 of the community colleges are held accountable to. And they include things like basic skills progression, credit math and English success, first-year progression, curriculum completion rates, licensure pass rates, and transfer performance rate. I am pleased to share that we performed very, very well among the seven performance measures among the 58. You can see here we were ranked seventh overall. That's taking the cumulative score of all seven of the performance measures. One I am very honored and excited to share is that we are first in first-year progression among the 58. What that is, is that is first-time fall credential-seeking students on the curriculum side that have either graduated or come back the subsequent fall. That speaks to student retention and student success. We are first in the state for that, ranked first in the state. Um, that will play into something else I'm going to talk about on the next slide. We are fifth overall in college-level English and licensure pass rates. Licenseure pass rates are first-time test takers. Those are any licensure rate that is required to practice in the profession that they are, have been educated in. That includes things like nursing, dental hygiene, basic law enforcement, EMT, paramedic, real estate. Uh, so any licensure program that we have. We are fifth in the state on pass rates for first-time test takers. And then fifth in the state for college-level English. And that includes any, again, a fall first-time seeking student who takes an English within three years of entering the campus and passing it with a C or better. So I'm very, very proud of those.
Very, very impressive.
It is. It is. It speaks highly to what our staff and faculty are doing to help our students be very successful in their academic endeavors, endeavors. Sorry. Next, just a few things. You know, I can't come up here and not say some of the great things that are happening at the college. We have recently been selected for an Aspen Top 150. There are over 1,000 community colleges in our great nation. And Aspen each year, well, excuse me, every other year picks 150 colleges. And that is based on our strong, improving, and equitable retention and graduation rates. So 150 colleges are chosen. We are one of 10 in North Carolina that have been chosen in the top 150. And that allows us to compete for the Aspen Prize of 2025. Um, that's a million-dollar prize. Um, they will narrow it down to 25 in April and then to 10 finalists in June. And then spring of 2025, they will announce the final winner. We will obviously be applying for that. I will share with you, though, what's really exciting about that. Wayne Community College has been recognized for the last three cycles, Aspen Prize cycles, '21, '23, and '25, all based on the success of our students. I think that goes back to the previous slide when we looked at first-year progression. Students that are coming to Wayne Community College are able to be successful and of getting the academic and educational knowledge that they need to be successful in the careers that they choose. So we're very excited about that. NITCH, which is an online platform for students and families to look for colleges that would meet the needs of their students or potential students, ranked Wayne Community College second in the best colleges in North Carolina. So very proud about that. Uh, we also have been awarded an anonymous trust grant for Train the East Initiative. The Train the East Initiative is a collaborative between us, Lenore Community College, Sampson Community College, and James Brunt Community College. We were part of a group through Go Global that had the opportunity to travel to Mexico. And through the Latino Initiative, learn much more about the Latino culture, heritage, et cetera. And out of that, the four of us have gone together to, um, develop the Train the East Grant. And we were awarded, between the four of us, a million dollars. And so we will get $250,000 over the next two years. We will use those funds to hire an achievement coach or success coach as well as a recruiter. There'd be a combined role to reach out to our Latino populations, let them understand the importance of higher education and trying to get them the training that they need to move into the workforce in whatever career field they desire. If you'll look back at some of the high school dropout rates at the last few years, second or third highest is Latino males. So this is a way, we're going to go to the high schools. We're going to connect with the individuals, we're going to connect with their families and, um, help them understand the importance of education. Very excited about this initiative, and we'll go from there. Military friendly school for the 10th year. Military friendly school, for the 10th year, we've been designated a military friendly school at Wayne Community College. We have a gold status, just like, I always say, like the Olympics, you want a gold or silver or bronze. We're at the gold status. We're very proud about that. All right, you would recognize this, right? It's been a long time coming. This is the steel structure that's going up for the site building. I do want to share that I'm very thankful for the collaboration that we've had with the county. You have been very supportive of this endeavor that's been, it's taken several years. But that structure is going up. We hope to have it 100% in steel by Thanksgiving. And we are going to have a topping off, what you referred to Chairman Acock. We do have a beam, the topping off beam that has been painted, ready to be signed. We will have a ceremony, we're hoping on the 16th of November. There will be invites coming very, very soon with the exact time. We'd love to have all of you come out and sign that chip and ginger. Everybody come out and sign that beam so you will be forever part of that structure. So very excited about that. You're always welcome to come on campus and check it out, but it's going well. We do have a couple of new programs I'd like to share with you. One is our educational preparation program. Some of you may have heard of a program in the past called lateral entry. So somebody that has a bachelor's degree that wants to go into the teaching profession, well, it's moved into a residency type program. And Wayne Community College is choosing to have an educational preparation program. So somebody that has a bachelor's degree and who would like to come and teach in our K-12 system, right now we're working on elementary teachers. So anybody that has referred to us that has secured or has an offer for a position in the elementary school that does not have the teaching licensure yet, but has that four-year degree, will come to Wayne Community College and there'll be six courses that they will take. We will have one-on-one advising, mentoring, and coaching for them, in-classroom observation for them, obviously supportive instruction to learn how to manage classrooms and teach, and guidance throughout the entire licensure process. We're excited that is starting, we have full approval of that and that will start in spring of '24, so just around the corner. In addition, we are starting an emergency medicine science degree. What you may not know, there has been a lot of national debate around paramedics having an associate degree. North Carolina, the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services has recommended that. They haven't implemented that yet, partly because COVID happened. But very soon, all new paramedics are going to have to have an associate degree. They will grandfather, from what I understand, they will grandfather current paramedics. But anybody else achieving that moving forward is going to have to have an associate degree. Well, we do not have a program that provided that and we would have to collaborate with another community college. So we are bringing that program online again this spring. It will be 100% online. We will use all of the continuing education credits they have towards their paramedic and transfer that into college level credit or curriculum level credit. And they will take a lot of general education classes, that the fundamentals that they need, and another EMS class to add on to their credentials. And after that, they will have their two-year associate's degrees. So very excited about that opportunity and we have a great person leading those efforts right now. Well, you just heard about National Apprenticeship Week. We are going to have the governor sometime during the week of November 13th to the 19th on our campus to announce an initiative for some youth apprenticeships and the partnership that we are going to have with Wayne County Public Schools and Smithfield Foods. Very excited about that. Once I have some concrete date and time, which I understand Ms. Solis has a meeting today to finalize those dates and times, we would definitely get an invite out to that. But obviously, we've had a longstanding partnership with Smithfield Foods and they really want to branch into youth apprenticeships. So we are working with Wayne County Public Schools, are going to identify some students that will be able to go through a youth apprenticeships, starting in their high school years. Very excited about that opportunity. We also have become a member of NC Reconnect. We're in the, there is four cohorts now of NC Reconnect students. And it's through the John and Balk Endowment is funding this opportunity. We are going to reach out to adults who have started something at the college but have not finished. And there's a lot of reasons why adults start an educational process and don't finish that process. Life gets in the way, families happen, jobs happen, a lot of things happen. But through the John and Balk Endowment and some funding they're going to provide for us and some resources that they're going to provide for us, we are going to have counselors be able to reach out to these individuals, help guide them into finding ways to come back to Wayne Community College. We are going to have a marketing campaign that's going to reach out to adults that have stopped out and we are going to try to reconnect. It has been very, very successful at other community colleges in North Carolina. And so we're very excited about having this opportunity. It was by invitation and I think that they have seen what we have done for student retention and completion and we have been able to be invited into that cohort. That is going to allow us to hire another achievement coach that is going to focus directly on adult students. Please understand, we do already have some achievement coaches on campus, we have two. And we have found them to be very successful to help individuals that when things come up during their educational journey and they feel like they have to stop out, that we can get them the resources that they need to be successful. We are offering some holiday classes. So if you know anybody that's maybe a university student that needs a few classes they want to take back and do something over the holidays, or you have any of our students or anybody that you know, we are offering some five-week classes. They are 100% online. You can see there an EDU 119, a Health 110, a Math 143, a Music 112, and a Politics 120 class. So registration is happening now, so let anybody know. Anybody that's listening, just contact Wayne Community College. And last but not least, as always, thank you for your support. We're doing great things at Wayne Community College. I have a team of fantastic individuals, faculty and staff that are dedicated to the success of our students, dedicated to business and industry, and most definitely dedicated to this community. So I do appreciate your support at all times. Thank you.
Good luck on the legal.
Thank you, thank you. It'll be a while before we know, another year. It's a lengthy application process, but we're up to the challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Faf.
You're more than welcome.
And I wanted to say thank you this coming week. The Firefighters Association has two annual schools a year and it's all run through the college. And you've got some outstanding instructors in that program.
Yes, I would agree with that. Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Moving on to unfinished business. Item number eight, we have a motion to approve the Growing Rural Economics with Access to Technology Agreement between the County of Wayne, the NC Department of Information Technology, and the North State Communications Advanced Services with an appropriate budget amendment.
We have a motion.
That will be framed.
Free.
I'm sorry. I'm sure I'll make a motion that we approve the Growing Rural Economics with Access to Technology Grant Agreement.
And appropriate budget.
And appropriate budget amendment.
Thank you, Frank.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah.
Mine didn't come up again, so I'm going to do it manually, okay? Oh, there it is.
Taste a little while we get down there.
Okay, thank you for that vote. And then, well, we move on to our consent agenda. We'd be looking for, having gone over that during our 8:00 AM agenda briefing, we'd be looking for that approval.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
No, we ain't got it yet.
Thank you for that vote.
Wait a minute, we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
For the consent agenda, there you go. Thank you.
It seemed like we were quick on the vote.
Just a bunch of quick minds up here.
Thank you now for that vote. Moving on, we need, now need to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, Madam Chair.
All right, we will recess the Board of Commissioner meeting and convene Wayne County Board of Adjustment.
Under that item, we need, you need to establish a motion, establish a Board of Adjustment public hearing on December the 5th, 2023, during the 9:00 AM meeting to receive public comment on the special use permit for Pine Grove Solar Energy Facility.
Motion.
It's all motion.
Yeah, both of them at 9:00, oh, this one at 9:30, not 9:00 AM, excuse me.
9:30, okay. All right, are we voting individually on these or?
Take a vote individually on each of them, please.
All right. Okay, next one, motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we establish a Board of Adjustment public hearing on December the 5th at 9:30 AM, meeting to receive public comment on special use permit for Turtle Grove Solar Energy Facility.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Commissioner Doughter. All right, anymore?
Okay, that's it. We need to re-
Ms. Solis, did you vote on that last one? Yes, I did, but I'll vote again. Okay.
You can, Madam Chair, you can now recess the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
All right.
And then reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, recess the Wayne County Board of Adjustment and we will reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting.
And when it comes to our public comment, speak in town.
Do we have anybody for public comments?
We have one signed up, that would be Ms. Constance Coram.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Coram.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
How are you today?
Good, thank you for asking. And again, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and to the listening audience. I am Constance Coram and come before you this morning as your Wayne County Register of Dees with a brief announcement that our office is pleased and elated to share with you. The North Carolina Secretary of State recently announced the Wayne County, that Wayne County was added to the list of Register of Dees now able to accept survey plaits by e-recordings. These plaits illustrate specific lots of land within our county, providing better services to our citizens. Anytime we're able to add services paired with convenience for our customers, my staff and I are appreciative of those actions. Your Register of Dees office staff are currently brainstorming additional programs and methods along with suggestions and comments from our consumers. In the near future, I'll be sharing these findings along with a more comprehensive plan for adoption considerations of additional programs and services that will benefit our customers and Wayne County citizens. And that, listening to customers providing our service is our goal. I just wanted to share that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Do you have any questions?
I have one. How many other counties are doing this?
I think out of the 100, if I'm not mistaken, there's about 48 that are actually doing e-recordings at this time. And it's going to be for people who are coming from out of the county, they won't have to do that anymore.
Okay.
Because sometimes they're coming from the, out of banks and such. And so this will alleviate a lot of that time to travel.
Well, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
A great mistake.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Coram.
Apology.
Ma'am, I said congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments? That is a very, a good process there for out-of-town clients doing business. Keeps them from having to come into the office and e-record those plaits. So that's well received. County Managers Report, as a reminder, we have a luncheon at 12:00 with our towns here in the county. Also have stated the community on Thursday at 11:30, I believe it is. And that's all I have on the County Manager, just those two reminders for you to consider attending. Then I'll turn it over to the Board for their Commissioners Committee reports.
All right, Commissioner Wade.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, it's always great to be here with my fellow board members, able to talk to the community as well, both the County of Wayne and the citizens of Goldsboro. When I took this job, I knew that it wasn't going to be easy. It's not easy for any elected official because they get blamed for things that they do that may be good, that they had nothing to do with, and things that they didn't do that may have been bad. So it's just part of the job. But I wanted to discuss a couple of things. I believe in accountability. If I've done something wrong, I believe I should be held accountable. Recently, there was an article that was written about me and it stated that I was to blame for all of the things that were going on with the city of Goldsboro. Mind you, I haven't been there in over three years. I was blamed for the hiring of Mr. Tim Salman. And that's not true. I believe that the paper that wrote this, they should retract things that aren't true. If they go to the Goldsboro City Council Meeting Minutes, it states that when it came to City Manager Tim Salman, that I made a vote, me and my fellow Commissioner, Mr. Devin Forster, that we voted that we would hire someone else that had more experience. And so I would ask that this publication do their due diligence and research the meeting minutes from the city of Goldsboro and retract the negative statement. I can not be held accountable for what happens with the city of Goldsboro. Matter of fact, I love the city of Goldsboro. I love Wayne County. That's why I don't mind fighting for this community. So to that paper, don't gaslight like the community. If you're going to write something, write something that helps the community. Write some things that show the good that we do in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Doughter.
Been there, done that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. I'd like to shine a light on the Night to Shine event. That, that's, that is something that is very inspiring. If you've never been to any event like that, it was, you come away blessed that our community can, can take part and support a function, an event as, as this. There again, the Maxwell Center is, because if we didn't have it, we couldn't have here. I mean, there's nothing big enough to, to do, I mean, because they pretty much had the whole building. Morgan went with Ryan and it was very inspiring. I mean, I will be attending again. The next thing I would say, if you would, I'd ask for our community to keep the fire chief at Thirteenth Fair, Brian Jones, in your thoughts and prayers. He was involved in a accident involving a motor, he was on a motorcycle. They airlifted him to fight it, ECU helped. He is home, but he's got a long road. So just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. And he's also the Vice President of the Wayne- your thoughts and prayers. And he's also the Vice President of the Wayne County Firefighters Association as well, so that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Rickell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Me and the Chair attended the meeting on base last week. I really didn't know what to expect, but it was, we had a great turnout, and I think we accomplished a lot of things with working with the base. We've got some great colonels out there now that are really interested in working with the county, you know. So it was, it was a, it was a great turnout. We did, it was, I don't know if what, 25, 30 people there probably.
At least 30.
Yeah, and everybody had some in foot, and we, I think we're going in the right direction. And also, we need to remember our men and women that served at Seymour Johnson, because we've got some in harm's way right now. And we need to pray for their safety and pray for their families back here, because they're the fourth, but they're always first. We need to, we need to keep those men and women in our prayers, because we've got some in harm's way right now. And as most of you know, I have had some health issues, but we've got them under control. I'm doing much better. Still got a little ways to go, but I've got some good doctors. And it's been so humbling to be in the position that all of us is in. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that know us that we don't know them. And it's so humbling for a total stranger to walk up and say, Mr. Stack, I'm praying for you. It's, it just, it gives you goosebumps to know that. And look, it's been both genders, all different races. I mean, it's just, it's been such a humbling experience, but the doctors has got me under control, and I'm not quite there yet, but I'm not going anywhere. Thank you all.
No comment, Madam Chair. No comment.
All right, well, thank you. It's my turn then. I've had a very busy month, but I've enjoyed every bit of the time that I've spent with the community. I went to the Cry Freedom event on the 24th at the Maxwell Center. The stories that you hear about what's going on in your community sometimes is just really scary, you know, about the young people that are being victimized by people that don't see any honor in what they do. I mean, they just take charge of other people's lives, and it's not very good. Also, I went to the Leading Wayne Luncheon, which was very good. The wise women, we had a whole room full of real smart women in that group. So we were, we were just enjoying ourselves and just had a good time, and that was put on by the chamber. You get to meet a lot of, lot of women who do a lot in the community and who are smart, too, and know how to do things and lead. Also, I went to the Farm Bureau Luncheon, enjoyed that. That was really great. And then I went to the adequate thing that Wayne Community College brings in their students. They have a select group of students, and they work with them on how to function in a public entity, you know, like businesses or whatever, which fork to use, how to use denacting, how to speak, what to do when you greet someone. And I think there was about 35 students there, boys and girls. They walked into the room, they immediately took your hand and shook your hand and introduced themselves. They come up with great conversations. It was really great to see these young people. Then I get a card from one of the students thanking me and how much I influenced him that night, which made it just perfect, just really balanced off tonight, when you hear back that they know how to write notes and thank you. And if anybody ever gets the opportunity to participate in that, I think you will really enjoy it, when you see the young people, what they're learning. Also, we, like Commissioner Acock said, we went to the Seymour Johnson on the invitation of Colonel Walker. We had a select group of people who do different things in the community, the community college, the fire departments, the schools. It was just a variety of people, how they're wanting answers and what they can also do to help the community, because they want to see the community succeed. And we just had great conversation on what we can do, and Colonel Walker even mentioned he would like to come before the board and talk to the board about the things at Seymour Johnson. And so I extended our welcome anytime he would like to come forth and speak. But anybody that has not met Colonel Walker, you have missed a treat, because he's a smiling and a laughing, and he has just got so much energy, and he really loves Goldsboro. He said that him and his wife are really looking strongly at Goldsboro if everything goes well, because they enjoy the community. So that's a big positive for us in Wayne County and everything. And I could go on, but I'm going to quit.
Madam Chair, also at that meeting, we were surprised that the number of people from the base, they were going to the farmer's market. I mean, they just raved about the farmer's market. And, you know, and they brought us up. I mean, we didn't bring it up, they brought it up. So next year, you know, I'd already mentioned extending the hours and maybe the days, but I mean, it surprised people, I mean, they just raved about the farmer's market.
They do like that.
Yeah, so let's keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I did have one additional comment. We would be remiss if we didn't remind everyone, today is Election Day.
Yes.
And there's some very important elections going on, so make sure you vote.
Yeah, thank you for that. And also, I would like to extend prayers for the former Mayor, Matt O'Joak's family, him and Becky. They were a very, very special couple to many of us, and Mr. Scott was a big part of WCDAs for years and put a lot of work into that, and he was just a fine man, and we're going to miss him. Thank you.
All right. We need to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we'll reconvene at 12:00 PM for our inter-local government meeting at the Maxwell Center.
Thank you. All right, we will recess to the Maxwell Center for the Municipalities Luncheon.